Welcome to Greer City Council Meeting. This is a duly called meeting held April the 23rd, 2024. We appreciate your attendance this evening. Having called the meeting to order, I would like to ask that Councilman Riley Bettis lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation for the council. If you would like, you can join us by standing.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for blessing us to be able to exercise our God-given freedoms this evening. Please, God, and direct us tonight to always act as you would have us act, to treat others just as we would want to be treated, and to always remember that the glory for anything we accomplish goes to you. Asking your continued blessings for our city, our state, and our country, I pray in Jesus' name, amen. Well, as you can see, we've got a big meeting tonight and lots of items to go through, and so we will attend to that at this point. Again, we appreciate your support as we meet twice a month. Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that then, council, let's move to council meetings that need minutes approved. The first of which is April 9th, 2024. That was the workshop. Entertainer motion to receive.
So move.
Motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
And then that was followed by a regularly scheduled council meeting, April 9th, 2024. Got ahead of myself. Yes. And I was going to thank Ms. Munoz for doing it and doing such a good job, and then I got mixed up, so. Let's try this again. April 9th, 2024 meeting was held as well, too. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second. Floor is open for any items of note for the clerk. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes. With that then, let's go on to a special recognition, and I am sorry I didn't get down earlier to greet these folks. We have a great relationship and a very longstanding relationship with the South Carolina Municipal Association of South Carolina and with the South Carolina Municipal Elected Officials Institute. This is an organization that provides services for municipalities across the state and helps us with our legislative agenda as well as day-to-day items that come up for cities big and small. And this is an organization that has provided for the city of Greer as well as the other 270-plus cities in our state on many, many occasions. And we look forward to those times when we are able to get together with other municipalities and the conferences that we have that keep us up to date, not only on legislative actions but on educational opportunities as well, too. And so this evening, I want to recognize or give special recognition to the 2024 South Carolina Municipal Elected Officials Institute for Government's Honor Role. Naomi Reed, who is the Field Services Manager with the Municipal Association of South Carolina, is here with us this evening to present the award, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. Thank you, council, Mr. Administrator, Madam Clerk. My name's Naomi Reed with the Municipal Association. I'm one of three field services managers with the association, probably most familiar with Charlie Barano, Ashley Callahan, and prior to me, Mr. Jeff Shaker. I started with the association in July, filling his shoes. I cover the upstate. I live just down the road here in Greenville, and so being over that territory was really convenient for me, being able to service the upstate. Like you said it best, Mayor Danner, I had a whole thing prepared, similar to what you said, so I know you have a lot of things to cover tonight, so I won't go into many details. But like you said, out of the 271 municipalities, 10 cities and towns named to the 2024 honor roll this year. So it just goes to show that each sitting council member here, through your service as an elected official and your dedication to education and training, it just shows your commitment to that and to your citizens here in Greer. And so on behalf of the Municipal Association, I'd like to say thank you for your service and present you with this award tonight.
We don't take these awards lightly. This is, as you just heard, one of 10 cities out of 271. This is something that requires not only training but advanced training, and that means attending training sessions and institute institutional knowledge as well as a bunch of different areas. And it is a testament to this council that we have accomplished this and that we generally got a little echo, that we generally have reached this even as we have had some turnover, not much fortunately, in our council. But to our newer council members, thank you for your participation in this as well. This is something that we are really proud of and think that it not only serves us as a council but you as citizens of the city as well. So thanks to the Municipal Association and the work that they do, and we thank you for the special recognition. Let's move on to the next item of business this evening, which is employee recognition. I hate to overuse the word, but again, this is a time that we really like to do this because this is the opportunity that we get to recognize those folks that have spent time with the city and have reached markers within their employment with the city that we think is of note. And what you will see is a wide range of time that they have been employed with the city, and that is always special for us to do as we honor those folks that have given of their time and their talents to make us a better place. And so we do that with a resolution that reads, and I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'm going to ask our administrator, Mr. Andy Merriman, if he will, to meet me up front, and we will award them their certificate of appreciation and a day off. So it reads, "A resolution recognizing and commending the city of Greer employees. And whereas the city of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and whereas Amber Chambers has served in the police department for five years, Max Liborets has served in the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department for five years, John Simmons has served in the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department for five years, James Pruitt has served in the Public Services Department for 10 years, Red Watson has served in the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department for 25 years, Brian Wilson has served in the Public Services Department for 25 years, and Tammy Tamala Duncan has served in administration for 35 years. Whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for the distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. Be it further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative day off with pay approved this the 23rd day of April, 2024." And with that, Mr. Merriman, if you would join me up front. John Simmons. James Pruitt. Ryan Watson. Started when he was 12. Brian Wilson.
I hardly know him by Brian.
I don't think 35 years is right. I know that not all of those folks were involved in our festival this weekend, but many of them were, and I got a Sunday morning text message from one of our citizens commenting on how clean downtown was Sunday morning following the festival. And my reply was that we are certainly proud of all our staff, but those that work often on weekends and overtime as they attend to the different festivals and events that we have downtown, and sometimes that means picking up some trash and doing a little cleanup at night or over the weekend, and we are always appreciative of those efforts. And so with that, I want to tip my hat to those that may have been involved and were here this evening and also to those folks that weren't able to make it, but hopefully if they hear that we recognize some people that might be passed along to them, that we appreciate the job that they did as well. So with that, let's do some more special recognitions. How about that? And so what I'm going to do is ask a whole bunch of people to come up here in the front and join me. I'm going to ask that the Riverside High School Girls Basketball Team and the Riverside High School Boys Basketball Team join me if they would here in the front. All right? I tell you what, ladies first. How about that? All right, come on, ladies. This has been a big year for women's basketball, and we've seen it from high school all the way through college, and a great testament to the quality of basketball that has been played, even through the fact that this year's championship games, there was more viewers of the women's game this year than there were the men's. So you get to pat yourself on the back for being a part of that. But let's bring it a little bit closer to home and recognize the Riverside High School Girls Team. Riverside Girls Basketball Team kept off a historic season this year, finishing with a record of 21 and 8. This is the first girls' basketball state championship in school history. Give them a round of applause. On their road to winning the state championship, they won the region for the first time in 2010 with a region record of 7-1, and won the upper state championship, first time since 1993. The team led by three all-region players, Kendall Parski, who averaged, Horsky?
Horsky.
Horsky, who averaged 18 points, three assists, and three rebounds, and three steals a game. She was very busy. Madison Farrar. Average 14 points, four assists, and six rebounds, as well as four steals a game. And Ellie Trickett. Who averaged 13 points, eight rebounds. Ms. Parski, Haraski, was also all-state. They had, and so give them a big round. So we've got a proclamation that will go to both the girls' and boys' team, and it says, "Whereas the city of Greer, the premier city in South Carolina to live, work, play, and raise family, the home of BMW's only North American manufacturing facility, Regal Spartan International, Spartanburg International Airport, and the South Carolina Inland Port, and from its very beginning known as the home of dedicated coaches, selfless athletes, and champion athletic programs. Whereas the 2023 Riverside High School Girls Basketball Team finished a historic season, finishing with a record of 21 and 8, winning the region for the first time since 2010, with a record of 7-1, winning the upper state championship for the first time since 1993, capturing the team's first basketball state championship in school history." With that, I declare that Coach Jones and Coach Arnold and the members of the 2023 Riverside High School Girls Team shall forever be recognized as the city of Greer champions and that they will inspire every citizen of Greer, particularly the little girls, to be the best versions of themselves possible, and that they will always be recognized as champions in the city of Greer, their home. And with that, I want to present this to y'all. All right, guys, come on up. Hey, y'all got to sing after y'all get done, so don't leave. Y'all have to sing before you're done. Supposed to be a man of many words. When we asked for some information about the girls' team and the boys' team, we got a pretty long write-up about the girls' team. Here's what we got from your coach. Record, 25 and 8. Region 7-1. Two A region champs, upper state champs, state runner-up.
That speaks for you, Brett.
Okay, guys, so what's a halftime speech like? I mean. Well, guys, we're certainly proud of y'all as well, taking Miss Reed as well. Whereas the 2023-24 Riverside High School Boys Basketball Team compiled a 25-5 record, including 7-1 in the region, en route to a region 2-4 A championship and an upper state championship and a runner-up in the state championship. City of Greer believes that our community is one of the most valuable resources, is its young people, that the city of Greer is made up of talented people who work hard and sacrifice every day, hoping to accomplish something great for their families and for their neighbors and for their community, and that champions should be celebrated as a representation of the exceptionalism that runs through every resident of the city of Greer. I therefore, myself and the city council, do hereby proclaim Coach Jones, Coach Arnold, and the members of the 23-24 Riverside High School, let's see now, is that, that's the girls'. Shall they forever recognize as the city of Greer champs and that they will inspire every city of Greer president to be the best version of themselves possible, and that they will always be recognized for their home as the city of. Gentlemen, thank you for representing us on that level, and do what's to be given. Thank you.
So bad.
I heard they were looking at it.
I was talking to one of the girls, what they're doing. They're still playing their 5A schedule, but when it comes time for playoffs.
Gentleman right there beside you, he said he'd lead it, to your left. He said he would lead it. Yes. Come on, guys.
Can't take them anywhere.
Now we know a little bit about the halftime speeches. I've got one more thing in here to go. You know, it's good to celebrate champions as the girls and boys are, and also all those that participate. We have got some really good high schools and certainly middle schools and elementary schools as well in the Greer community, and we appreciate each and every one of them for what they do and how they improve this community and the middle college as well, too. And I'm sure I've forgotten others, but what a great group of folks and represent our city well. We've started a little sort of intermural play in terms of our football teams with Greer High and Riverside High, and that generates a lot of interest each year into who's going to be the winner of that game. And so we have a good time with our high schools, and they bring a lot to our town, both in recognition and in quality of life. And, you know, I'm going to show my age just a little bit, but when we asked Red Watson to come up a minute ago and celebrate 25 years with the city, I thought about, I don't think I ever volunteer coached one of his teams, but certainly had boys the same age and watched them all grow up and play all kinds of different sports, both at the recreational level and at the high school level. And it's good to see these kids, some which will leave and settle other places and some that will stay in our community, and always good to see that come around. We've got one of our exceptional athletes sitting right here with us this evening, and we appreciate those folks that have done things while they were here in the high school and went on to college careers and then came back to Greer and made this home. So always good to be able to do that. Mr. McAdie, I saw you sitting back there. Do you have a guest that you want to present to us this evening? If you'd like to come up here to the front. Have you got anybody that's good this evening from the Gossnell family?
I know it's no members of the family.
Okay, well, I'm going to present this to you to present to them, so if you'd like to come to the front, that'd be great. I'm right there. We recognize our clerk for her length of service this evening, and this is coming up on Professional Municipal Clerk Week, and we are participating in that with a proclamation. And it reads as such, "The position of municipal clerk is the only municipal staff role that is required by state law regardless of municipality size and/or form of government. And whereas all 271 cities and towns in the state are required to govern municipal clerk, and whereas the city of Greer has had a rich history of talented and dedicated municipal clerks, including Wilma Gosnell, who served as the municipal clerk for the city of Greer for 30 years, 1950s into the 1980s, and whereas the city of Greer's current municipal clerk, Damon, who served the city of City of Greer's current municipal clerk, Danny Ong, who served the City of Greer for nearly forty years, playing a critical and varied role to support the mayor, city council. Whereas municipal clerk's responsibilities under state law include giving cohesive meetings to council members and to the public, keeping minutes of its proceedings and performing the other duties. Regardless of city sites, municipal clerks have seen their role and responsibility expanded with change. Whereas with advancements in software and hardware, municipal clerks have begun increasing material packets and to record meeting minutes of the records. Municipal clerks get the professional training from the South Carolina Municipal Finance Clerks, Officers and Treasurers Association, an affiliate organization of the municipal. Therefore, let it be resolved in the mayor of the City of Greer and Greer Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City. City of Greer recognizes and honors its valuable contributions, okay, as made to our city leadership. As they'll serve students. Ms. Duncan, what'd you used to have to do when you wanted to look up old records back four, five, six years ago, ten years ago?
That would be manually.
And it involved going to the basement of a building, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, it did.
Did it involve spiders?
Yes, it did.
Do we have a new place to do it now?
Yes, we do.
And does it have spiders?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Hopefully, no bugs of any kind.
Departmental reports are contained in your packet this evening. Counsel, you are directed either to the administrator or department head in regards to questions you may have regarding those reports. And our financial activity report will be brought to us by Mr. Seifert this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, tonight. I'm pleased to bring to you the financial performance summary for the month ended of March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Beginning with the general fund, we have revenue recorded of thirty-two million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, and expenditures of thirty-three million, seven hundred and thirty thousand. And that amount is six percent under budget. We have a carrying cash balance in the general fund of twenty million, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And referencing the benchmark dashboards, we have a combined negative variance of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Moving to the hospitality fund, we have revenue that is five percent over budget at two million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, with expenditures of two million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, and a cash balance at March thirty-first in the hospitality fund of two million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And finally, the stormwater fund, we have revenue recorded of one million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, with expenditures that are currently five percent over budget, with one million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and then a cash balance of three million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. Be happy to field any questions you may have.
Council floor is open for questions or discussion. Hearing none. Thank you, sir. We appreciate the update. Mr. Mayorman, administrator's report, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. I want to thank you for taking the time this evening to recognize our employees and, and our community members, that, young and old, that really kind of make the fabric of our community so strong. So thank you very much for that. A few, few updates for you. First of all, reminder that the Public Services Spring Cleaning Event will be April twenty-seventh from eight till noon. That's again, April twenty-seventh from eight AM till twelve PM. Join the City of Greer and our public services for our spring, spring cleaning event. The event will be held at the Greer Recycling Center and will feature a drug take-back opportunity from the police department. So mark your calendars, and more information on that event is available online. The platform at Greer Huddle will be announcing their grant recipients on May second. Graduates of the platform at Greer Boot Camp are eligible to apply, and the prize will be up to twenty-five thousand dollars to be divided between two winners. So that is, we're very excited about what the platform is doing and what it continues to do for business incubation in our community. Just by way of information, the staff is working on a public art committee. We are working to explore the creation of a public art committee. It would be a group of people, would include artists, non-artists, et cetera, to help evaluate where public art makes sense and in what form. We, the UDO currently, the new UDO currently allows for public art, murals in particular, but we don't really have a well-defined process by which we would vet any of that. So your staff is currently working through developing the bones of a public art committee and all, of course, all the bylaws, et cetera, that would go along with that. But we will keep council apprised of that process and bring y'all into that process when the time is right. But I did want to keep you in the loop. And finally, well, excuse me, two other things. May third, May third, mark your calendars, between three and five, we will have an open house for our Berry Avenue building, where we have completed the renovations on Berry Avenue. Y'all probably came there. It's been, Mike, what is it, eighteen months ago now we did the engineering side of it, but we've completed all that work in the back. And so we will do an April, open house on May third, between three and five. And finally, I do want, you know, I'm excited about it. I think, I'm excited about it, but it's not anything I did. It is what this council has done and what David and his staff has done over the years for, for this city. But we just were confirmed today that we both, we have a Moody's and an S and P double A rating. So our IPRBs that we, that y'all passed, both the two thousand and twenty-four series and the two thousand and twenty-five series, have maintained a double A credit rating, which is a high-grade investment-level rating that is just as good as it can get. It's fantastic. But it's, it's, it paints a picture of our financial stability, but it also is reflective of years of wise use of funds. So all of this is hot off the presses today, but I would be remiss in not bringing it up, congratulating you, and then congratulating David and his staff for all that work to get us here. So, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Administrator is available for questions or more information. Counsel, let's move to old business. We've got two items of old business to, to attend to this evening. The first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number seven dash two thousand and twenty-four. This is an ordinance authorizing a finance franchise agreement. Mr. Seifert joins us for that conversation.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. When we brought this ordinance to you for the first time, the first reading last month, council requested some verbiage to be included in the contract with this, which is attached as, excuse me, as exhibit A to the ordinance in regards to placement of the lines underground and then assignment clause. We have worked with our city attorney and the attorneys from Lumos. And the placement of the communication lines verbiage is a paragraph added, section five point one on page five. And then the assignment clause was added on page eighteen as item number I. It wraps page eighteen and top of page nineteen. If you would like to review that, we bring that contract back to you for your consideration for second reading.
Thank you, sir. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Who makes the final call on? They submit their plans for installation, and there's an area that they say they can't, it's not commercial, commercially reasonable to be placed underground? Who is, who is the one who makes that call?
As I understand it, that would be under their control for commercially reasonable.
That's under the?
Their decision.
Their decision?
Yes, sir. As I understand it, from their language in the attorney, they take into account obstacles.
Yeah, I know, but that's, that's kind of like the fox guarding the hen house, isn't it?
Like it would be in consultation, doesn't it? Like it would be something that both parties determine.
Well, it says, you know, five point one, David, that you pointed out, you know, it says that it can be reasonably expected to accomplish the desired action without a material increase in cost. So, I mean, are they looking at it, is that kind of how they'll be looking at it through just a cost equation to say, you know, if it's cost prohibitive for us to go under the road, we need to go through the air? Is that a?
That's one of the considerations. In discussions with them, there are certain obstacles, obviously, through boring underground. They have DOT restrictions. There may be other infrastructure from other utilities in place that they take into account to determine what is commercially reasonable.
Yeah, but the, it's always cheaper to go overhead. So they could say, well, it's just too expensive to bore underground down Point Set Street. And so we've got another line running down Point Set Street.
I do think that's effectively what they're saying. If you continue to read B and C, it just says it's consistent with industry practices, which tells me they're going to be looking to what their competition has done and then kind of follow suit. And then it says, takes into consideration the amount of advance notice required to take such action, the duration, type of action, competitive, so competitive environment's the last piece that they say. So again, they're just looking at what their competition is doing, and they'll just follow suit.
Five point two and five point three address the previously existing utilities. Five point two says if they're underground already, they'll go underground, and if they're above ground, they'll, they'll go above ground. So to your point about it'll be another line.